Twenty-three. At this time, the meeting has been called to order. Roll call, please.
City council members. Councilmember Alvarez.
Here.
Councilmember Marty Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hamilton.
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Here.
And Planning Commission Commissioner Biassari, Commissioner Harmon, Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Kuhn, Commissioner Lethen.
Here.
Vice Chair Giraso, Chair Madden.
Here.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to item three, public comments for items not on the agenda.
I do not have any speaker cards.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to item four.
Item four A, conduct joint city council and planning commission study session and provide direction regarding the sixth cycle 2023 to 2031 housing element certification and implementation.
Thank you. First, I want to thank the planning commissioners for being here. Thank you, staff, and I know this is a lot of work. This came about because I was at City Hall and all of a sudden there was the city manager, the assistant city manager, and the community development director looking at me, and I thought something had happened. But what it was, was mayor, for efficiency and to expedite, what if we had a joint meeting between the council and the commission? There's a lot to tackle in a short amount of time in order to resubmit and hopefully be approved. So what do you think about having a joint meeting? I said, sure. So I think this gives an opportunity for the council to give some guidance. We have several questions. It helps the commission to hear firsthand, real-time from us as some of our thoughts. And then, of course, there will be an opportunity to see if there's additional from what we're hearing from the council on particular topics. But with that said, we have a presentation that will be about 30 minutes, so I'm going to ask everybody to sit, relax, and we'll begin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Chair, and members of the planning commission. My name is Peter Gilly. I'm the community development director, and I am presenting this housing element item. While I am presenting the item, the work on the housing element itself is a product of multi-year process with senior planner Michael Smith as the project manager. He is in attendance today. He is in the back watching on. We also have support from Good City Planning Consultants, and the housing element is also built on some data that was prepared by 21 Elements. This is the agenda for the study session. It's the standard list of items. The objective, there's a lot of information in the packet. The presentation seeks to give a quick overview that touches on a lot of different pieces to give a flavor of the entire package, purposely keeping it short to maximize the amount of time for public comment, for the Q and A, for discussion, and for council direction. The key to staff is the seven questions we're asking for feedback on. Those questions are both in the staff report and sprinkled throughout the presentation. There's a slide at the end of the presentation that has all seven questions. So that how we move forward on the housing element is going to depend on council's responses to those. Normally, one does not start a presentation with the ending of the presentation, but because there's so much information, I'm going to go over the key takeaway slide at the beginning, sharing what I hope are the key points that you take away. First is that the housing element is a heavy load. It's a heavy load of work for the city, but all California cities are in the same boat. Also, council has already adopted the housing element. On January 23rd, based on a recommendation of the planning commission, council adopted the housing element, and the revisions that are being worked through for the resubmital from staff's perspective is about 5% to 10% of the whole document. So I want to give that type of context, that 90-plus percent of the document is the same as what was adopted earlier. The revisions are what staff believes is necessary to receive certification from HCD. HCD is the State Department of Housing and Community Development. They have the authority and the responsibility to certify each city's housing element. Until it is certified by HCD, it is a housing element that is in noncompliance. The other aspects are that the RENA, which is the number of units that the city has to plan for, can be met. That was true in the prior document that council saw in January. It remains true. There have been a couple of adjustments to it. We'll also try to touch on, for context and managing expectations, that it's not the city's job to build the units. It's the city's job to make sure we've done everything we can to make it so the market can build what the market is able to bear. We have regulations that could be a constraint that we should look at. We have processes that could be constraints that we should look at. If there are incentives that we could provide, we should look at those. But in the end, the number of units actually built is going to be based on the market. The programs are the other big part of the housing element. They have been reorganized, and based on HCD's comments, the commitments the city's making to the state have been expanded. The state is going to expect the city to meet its program, its commitments for the programs. And lastly, what I consider the most important part is how are we going to implement the housing element? How are we going to do the things that we are saying that we're going to do? While it will be difficult, we have identified a plan for how we can successfully implement the housing element. So I'm going to go into a quick background on the housing element. The backdrop is that we are in a housing crisis. Over 50 years ago, the state first passed laws about calling on local jurisdictions to plan for housing. As years went on, the state continued to not see the results that they wanted, and so they continued to pass more laws, adding more requirements. In the last five years, there's been a significant amount of legislation, and today the city has far less control over individual housing projects and far more responsibility for housing policies. There's also the fact that particularly in recent years, there's been so many laws, such a high volume, and a great number of them all at once, that the wording of them leaves a lot of room for interpretation. That makes doing a housing element a lot harder. We are in the sixth cycle housing element update. As noted, there's more responsibility on the cities. The responsibilities are greater than in past cycles, but as more and more housing elements become certified, there is much more clarity on what we need to do. And the Bay Area entered the sixth cycle, is one of the last regions to enter the sixth cycle, so there are other regions that have had a head start and thus have gone through a multi-year process of doing the housing element. We're able to glean from those certified housing elements what we should be doing. So what is a housing element? It's a chapter of the general plan. It summarizes existing housing conditions, identifies adequate sites for our share of regional housing need, and it identifies programs we will undertake to address and improve local housing issues. One big part of that is the RENA process, the regional housing needs allocation process. HCD assigns each region of the state with a regional housing needs number. ABAG, who is the council of governments for our region, received a number of about 441,000 units. ABAG, as the other regional agencies, developed a methodology that determines how that big number is spread out to all the jurisdictions. San Bruno's share was 3,165. So RENA is not new. It's just that the numbers in this round are larger than they have been in the past. Not only that, the criteria that the city has to meet to identify a site that counts towards the RENA is also higher. So we have to identify more sites, and it's harder to justify a site. The other part is the programs. The programs are also not new, but there is more scrutiny and expectations on the commitments. And affirmatively furthering fair housing, AFFH, is a new part of housing elements, and we'll touch on that later in this presentation. The status of our housing element is, as I mentioned, it was adopted in January of 2023. It included the Airport Land Use Commission override, because we are proposing new housing in areas that have high noise levels from the airport. It was, the housing element was submitted to HCD at the end of January. Comments were received end of March. Three categories of what was asked for. More information on basically all aspects. More expansion of the methodology and the justification of the sites that were picked, expansion on the analysis of many of the sections, and then expansion of the commitments in the programs. In May 2023, council approved additional funds for our consultant, who is Good City, to support staff on the plan. And at that point, the original thought was that the update, the revisions needed, were going to be a moderate amount of work. Not easy, but not the extent that it ended up being. So we learned a greater amount of work was needed through our conversations with HCD, with our consultants, with 21 Elements, and as we looked and compared our housing element with other certified housing elements. We added Veronica Tam and Associates as an additional consultant to advise us. Her firm is one of the leading housing element firms in the state. I make the joke that HCD calls her to ask her what some of the laws mean. At this point, we are confident that we know the path to certification, and that's what we're going to be going through. So a quick overview of the RENA. As noted, San Bruno's RENA is 3,165 units. The council had directed to have a 15% additional buffer, bringing the number to 3,640 units. Having a buffer is highly recommended and a very good thing to have. The table above shows, the first column, the unit counts that were in the previously adopted housing element from January. The second column is the revised housing element. They're basically the same. There was a slight reduction in ADUs being projected based on revised data points of historic trends. A couple of sites were taken out of the housing element map. Those are Melody Toyota and the parking lot to the north, because the owner is reusing the building for office. And then, a number of projects that were in the approved category, the owners have reapplied for new entitlements for more units, and so they were moved from approved into the sites inventory pending projects. All in all, when you put it all together, it's slightly more units than in the first round in January. But as noted, we are not required to build these units, only to effectively plan for them. More numbers about the RENA are provided in attachment one to the staff report if there are any questions. This is the revised sites inventory map. Admittedly, at this scale, you can't read it. This is also an attachment to the staff report, and we can pull up the PDF of the document and zoom in if needed. The sites inventory map represents all the housing projects projected for the future. The sites are mostly the same. There are four categories of sites. The first is the pending projects in the shades of green. As I noted, a few pending projects moved from approved to pending, so there are more green sites than there were in the last round. The other site that I want to call out are the ones in a shade of orange. These are the new sites identified in the sixth cycle that have to be rezoned to allow the units that we're saying are going to be there. Those sites are Tanfran, the pet hospital across from Tanfran, and the Russo Dental Building also across from Tanfran. Those three sites do need to be rezoned in a timely manner, and we'll be touching on that later in the presentation. Overall, for the RENA, there are minimal changes needed. We'd estimate of all of the aspects of RENA, maybe 5% of all of it has changed. There's ample sites and a buffer. There is a challenge for staff still, as we continue to write the written justification for each nonvacant site that we're suggesting is a buildable site. In the event that HCD does not accept every site, staff proposes to remove that site and take one of the following actions on the screen. And this is going to lead into the first question we have for council. If a site is, needs to be removed, our first inclination will be to simply take the site out and accept that we will have a smaller buffer, as in don't try to find another site. The second approach with HCD will be simply committing that we will add more sites to the sites inventory in the future. We actually have a program that calls for us to do that, Program 3D. Only if those do not work, would we add additional sites at this time. The reason for that is adding additional sites at this time has a ripple effect on the whole document and the environmental review. So basically, it adds more time to the overall process. So because we have what we consider a healthy buffer, we're confident that if there's one or two sites HCD has issues with, we could take them off and then just move forward. The first question is whether council supports staff adjusting the sites inventory if necessary based on negotiations with HCD. And the intent is not to answer every question one at a time. It's to go through the presentation and then to come back. Now do a quick overview of the programs. The more revisions were made to the programs than to the RENA section. The programs were reorganized and commitments expanded to respond to HCD. The previously adopted housing element, which is attachment four to the packet, starts on pages 22, goes through pages, page 50, had about, had 40-plus programs with 100-plus actions. Feedback from Veronica Tam and Associates and HCD was that that's too much for a city the size of San Bruno. The revised housing element is reorganized, so there's 19 programs with about 50 actions, more than 50, but in that ballpark. A cross-reference list was provided as well, attachment five, that shows how most of the actions in the new programs are drawn from the programs of January 2023. So the council-approved programs from before are still the basis of the revised housing element. There are notable programs staff called out in the written staff report, Table Two, Page Six. I have slides for those as well. The intent is not to go through those unless there are questions, so I'll just cycle through them quickly. For the production of housing and provision of sites, this is the first set of notable programs. Again, this is in Table Two of the staff report. This is the second set of programs for production of housing and provision of sites. For the removal of governmental constraints, these are the notable programs. And then for the fair housing section, these are the notable programs. Again, if council wishes to come back and talk about any of these, we can come back to these slides later. There is also, as I mentioned, the AFFH, affirmatively furthering fair housing, this new to this cycle. And AFFH is basically proactively taking steps to improve housing conditions from an equity perspective. Attachment seven of the packet has a matrix that shows the AFFH commitments and metrics. It also cross-references with the housing element programs as well. One of the key aspects of AFFH is that it calls on the city to target efforts to geographic areas based on the type of resource area it is in. What does that mean? So this map is drawn from state data. It's a TCAC opportunity map, which is a part of the state's taxing entity, but it uses economic, educational, and environmental health scores to categorize census tracts, and it's done throughout the state. The results for San Bruno are probably not surprising, that the lands west of 280 have the higher economic, educational, and environmental health scores, enough to qualify to being in the high resource category. The tracts east of El Camino Real, for the most part, have lower scores and are in the low resource area, and the lands in between are in the moderate. The map's a key part of AFFH, as the state wants future council actions on infrastructure policy and budgeting to be based on, or take into account, the equity of these resource So in summary for this section, the housing element programs and even the content of the AFFH matrix are very similar to the previously approved housing element. The programs are reorganized, commitments are expanded as we feel is needed to get certification. The two questions for these areas are, does the council support the programs and commitments? And in the event that HCD directs us to further expand a commitment or add another program, does council support staff adjusting the programs if necessary based on negotiations with HCD? Okay, now we will go into schedule and next steps. So we're leaving the portion about the content and the revisions to the housing element and going into the how are we going to get it certified and how are we going to implement? Arguably, these are the parts where we're asking for the most feedback on. The schedule for certification that I'm about to show is going to be a major challenge, but the main goal is to get the document certified with our next housing element formal So this slide is a condensed version of Table Three on page eights and nine of your staff report, condensed, so it shows better on the screen. The Phase One would be by the, by mid-November, after we take the direction from this meeting, we will complete the revised draft and have that draft peer-reviewed by Veronica Tam and Associates. Then by the end of December, we would have sent it to HCD for an informal review, which is not a formal resubmital. It's not the full letter that we get back, but they give us some quicker feedback. And by the end of December, we would receive that informal feedback. Now, in the event that that informal feedback calls for significant changes, staff intends to bring the item back to council and talk about what those changes are. We remain optimistic that the informal feedback is going to be mostly positive, and if there are any other changes asked for, we think they will be minor, in which case we would move on to the next phase. The first part of 2024, we provide council and planning commission with a memo that describe the changes that have been made since this meeting. We would formally resubmit to HCD, and hopefully by the end of February, receive an approval response. Then we can hold the readoption hearings for the housing element, along with the rezonings in March for the planning commission and April for council. So the question for council and for the schedule is, does the council support the recommended schedule for housing element certification? The last step is implementation, and like the schedule, implementation will be a major challenge. Today, we do not have the resources needed to successfully implement the housing element, and HCD will hold us accountable for not meeting the programs. But with some council strategic initiatives that have already placed us on a path to looking at how to do work in the department more efficiently, we think we can build on that, on the things council's already asked us to do, and we've developed a strategy for successful implementation. And there are three keys to that. The first is that the housing element implementation, I think I've said it enough times, is going to take a lot of work and have costs. The first key is to open up capacity through the Efficiency and Productivity Ordinance Amendments that are part of a council strategic initiative. Second would be to distribute the program implementation responsibilities among staff, planning commission, and council. And then third is to identify funding sources to minimize housing element implementation impacts on the general fund. Walk through each one briefly. So the first part, amending the municipal code to free up capacity. As I said, Strategic Initiative 10.1, we're already basically doing that. We're already looking at that. Now admittedly, that was primarily for supporting local economic development, getting projects through faster, but we can use the same efforts and improvements to build up capacity for staff to spend on housing element implementation. An example of what this could be, could be certain type of applications that currently go to the planning commission for final action. We could amend the ordinances so that the minor ones go to a staff action instead. Staff has already tentatively established a target date of December 2023 for a study session to present council with a list of potential changes and to get feedback. With tonight's joint session as a model, perhaps that December study session could also be a joint session where, again, we're talking about ordinance changes to free up staff capacity and arguably free up planning commission agendas as well. Based on whatever direction we receive, then, we would have public hearings in February and March. If we do make it so that certain applications don't go through as many hearings, that will result in less staff time spent on an application, which frees up time, and it also means we should lower the fees for that. And so we would update the fees accordingly, and the new processes could go into effect July 2024. So at that point in time, July 2024, we could start seeing extra capacity from existing One of the questions is whether council supports this schedule for the Efficiency and Productivity municipal code amendments. Second, next challenge, there's a lot to do with the programs and the actions, and staff proposes a team approach. About 50% of the actions are administrative or operational, so they don't need any type of policy development or ordinances and such. The remaining approximately 50% do need policies and ordinances, all of which need to be approved by council. But how we get from starting an action to council final action, we have three different routes that we suggest. For the more complicated and potentially controversial items, of which we think about 20% of the actions fall into this, our suggestion is we start with a council-planning commission study session as a kickoff, where council will identify the scope and the parameters for that policy, and then staff would take it back to planning commission. We would work through the details. Planning commission would make a recommendation and come to council for a final action. Council would either adopt the planning commission recommendation, modify it, or send it back. An example of that is the item I just mentioned about the Strategic Initiative 10.1, Productivity Ordinance Amendments, where the kickoff that staff is suggesting being a joint study session, at which point it will go to planning commission for them to have hearings on and then to council. There's another grouping of actions, about 20% as well, that are either required by law or less complicated in nature. For those, we propose staff taking those items directly to planning commission. Planning commission will work through the action, make a recommendation up to council. Again, council can adopt, modify, or send the item back. Examples for these type of actions would be the actions to rezone the three housing element sites that are already in the adopted housing element that shouldn't be controversial, and the program to update the municipal code to comply with state law. Those type of ordinances, the state law is already telling us basically everything we have to do, and therefore, we don't think it will be as complicated. There's another category of actions, less than 10%, and those are ones staff would bring directly to council for action, because they involve fees, agreements, or the use of city land. And that is all, makes sense to be, come directly to council for a final action. So it is common to use the planning commission for general plan implementation, and the housing element is part of the general plan. So that is part of the basis of this recommendation. And this proposed team approach distributes the implementation And this proposed team approach distributes the implementation tasks in a manner where we think that we will be able to meet all the timeframes we are committing to HCD. As I noted prior, all the policy development still has to come to council for a final action. So feedback from councils requested on whether there's support for this approach. You notice of all the questions, this one has the "does the council generally support?" That's because until the programs are truly finalized, until we talk to HCD and know what they all are, we're not sure what the assignments would be. Staff would bring a recommended list of assignments when we bring the housing element to council for readoption in 2024, at which council can weigh in on, is this the right list? Is this the right distribution? So the question is, is this concept and the overall scope and parameters that we're talking about something council wants staff to continue pursuing? And then the last part, we have to find a way to pay for this. And so there will certainly be added costs. Very preliminary estimates at this point are that housing element implementation will cost about $840,000 a year. That includes an additional staff member that will be needed to help with housing element implementation. Even though we are adding some capacity through the amending the planning processes, there's a significant amount of staff time that's going to have to be spent on all this work. Their one-time cost as well, that we estimate, again, a very preliminary estimate of $1.7 million. These are all in $2023 and would carry through for the planning cycle that ends in 2031. So identifying non-general fund sources for this implementation is a high priority. One aspect, again, ties into a council strategic initiative. This one's 18.0. That calls for development of a plan on how we prioritize how to use our housing funds. It is very common that cities mix, take their housing funds and expand it on a mix of staffing costs, programs, and construction of affordable housing. Also, there's the opportunity through the master fee schedule update to look at whether adjustments to staff overhead costs or even a percentage fee to certain permits can be added for housing element implementation in order to fund all of this work. We have similar mechanisms for general plan maintenance, for technology, and for document imaging. And then lastly, some of the programs will have to rely heavily on grants as the primary funding source. So to put the city in the best position for housing element implementation, we believe we need to accelerate the work on council strategic initiative 18.0, the housing funds priority, and also the fee schedule work in order to develop and inform the council's future deliberations on the fiscal year '24 or '25 fiscal year budget. No funding decisions or formal actions are asked for at this time, we're simply wanting to make you aware of these type of options. The last question is, does the council support efforts to use housing funds and grants to fund implementation and reduce the impact on the general fund? Skip ahead a little bit, so key takeaways in question. So coming back to the slide that I, there's actually one more, I'm sorry. Coordinated efforts. The efforts that I talked about, the path for certification, the path for the ordinance amendments for efficiency and productivity, and the path for funding, they're all essential to successfully implementing the housing element, and we recommend they all happen between now and the start of the next budget year. That will be a challenge, but doing so puts us in the best position to be successful with the housing element. Most of the questions being asked basically are asking whether council accepts this approach of trying to do these three initiatives in coordination in this timeframe. So I showed you these in the beginning. Housing element's still a heavy load. We are changing sections of the housing element, but only in a manner that we think is necessary to receive certification. We're confident in the Rena, we think the programs are in a place that we can implement them, and with the steps that we talked about, we think we can successfully implement the housing element. This is the list of the seven questions, and we can leave this up. We know there are many more questions that have to be answered. These questions help us determine if the path that we've laid out is acceptable to council, and then we can start taking that path on towards certification and the start of implementation. There will be many more meetings and discussions about the specifics of implementation. This is really to start us down on the path. So that concludes my presentation. Able to come back to any prior slide, and I can also bring up the PDF of the staff report and attachments if needed. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much for the report, the information, and trying to keep it as concise as possible. What I'm going to do is, we have seven questions. What I'm going to ask my colleagues is, we don't need to go into about the state or the Rena numbers or the history, we've got in the history. We're about the daunting task of getting this taken care of. What I'd like to do is try to keep us succinct to the questions that the council's being asked, and I'd like to take them one at a time. Let's focus on each of those and then proceed through. If there's nothing that you have and you're okay with it, a simple "I'm okay" is fine. So the first question, key question is, one, support staff adjusting the site's inventory if necessary based on negotiations with HCD. Any questions on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt. You might want to open it up to the public first.
Okay, since we do, thank you, City Manager. You folks would like to speak on this topic before you have to hear from us, so we should hear from you first. Please, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, thank you. My name's Nicholas Rackerd-Hilts. I have a question. I'm wondering why most of the housing is being built in our neighborhood, the low resource neighborhood, and not so much in the higher resource areas? So I was wondering if that could get answered as well. I understand that we're trying to build around corridors, and I am for more medium-densing housing, but we want to be in the areas in like Upper San Bruno. Policies like this rezoning is how we ended up with low-income folks boxed in by 101-380 El Camino, and we have to deal with all of that congestion and all of that pollution. We want to be up there, too. We want to be by the parks, we want to be by the trees, we want to be by the quiet. So why do we have to take the burden of building all the housing in our neighborhood? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else at this time? Because once we're going to do that, thank you for that. Can I, since the person was nice enough to be here, thank you. At the start, maybe we can just address that question, and then we'll start with council with the first question.
Yes.
Please.
So of the 22 housing element sites, nine are in the census tracts that would qualify as a low resource area. That is less than half. These are all on El Camino, which is the high transit corridor, so there is competing direction from the state and our regional authorities to plan for housing on the transit corridors. Do want to note that the rezoning of Tanfran and such, Tanfran is not in a low resource area. A moderate resource area, so beyond that, the listing of the site is basically the same as the prior one in January, and we did not seek to change it too much. If there is interest in doing so, we can. It's also important to note, the sites reflect the city showing to the state that we have the land available for housing to be built. That doesn't mean these are the sites that the housing's going to be built on. It's very common that housing ends up happening on some sites that aren't on this list, because there is a lot more land zoned to allow housing than is on this list. So there's a variety of issues involved, and aspects of doing things differently in the low resource areas versus the high resource areas is still going to be a topic that we talk about all throughout the housing element implementation.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for being here, and also if there's additional, sir? Sir? If there's additional stuff, also, we can have, if you want to leave your name or number, we can also have Community Services Director or a member of the staff also go over any of the additional questions that you might have as well. Okay. Then Mr. Medina can, I guess, contact you. Okay, let's go back to support staff adjusting the site's inventory if necessary based on negotiations with HCD. Is there any questions on that specific topic question, or are there any objections at this time that staff would have that support? I'm seeing and hearing none.
Through the chair, Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question regarding the revision that we are addressing, the rezoning for the housing element based on the HCD requirements. Is this in particular with the revision and also the revision and review for the housing element that we sent to them back in January, the one that council approved? Is that why we're rezoning? Are we addressing that?
Councilmember Alvarez, the rezonings of the three sites would have been something we would have had to have done, even if HCD accepted the January version, we would have to do it anyway. There's no change in the sites that we're rezoning, or no change to how they will be rezoned, so that has not changed. We're not expanding the number of sites that would have to be rezoned at this time, and it is not a response to an HCD comment, but there is legislation that says that if we don't rezone them, then our housing element will become non-compliant. So it makes, it's in our interest to do the rezoning at the same time we bring the housing element to be readopted.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on that first question only? Councilmember Medina.
Thank you, and thank you for this very detailed response to HCD. So basically, how will staff provide feedback to the council and the Planning Commission as all of these different things are being negotiated?
So the, if I can get the slideshow back up. I think I turned off my share screen. My Zoom quit unexpectedly. Great. So the...
Why don't you just tell us the page, please?
Yes, so this is Slide 25, and it is also page...
Talking about the schedule and next steps?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's Page 8 of the written staff report. So when we submit for informal review and receive informal feedback by the end of December, if they call for significant changes, we're effectively putting the brakes on this schedule and just coming to a council meeting. If they give us comments we think are very workable, then in January, after we get those comments back, we're going to be sending a memo to both council and Planning Commission so you know what all the changes are.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any commissioners want to chime in? Obviously, the council seems to be in consensus on that. Is there any feedback? If not, it's not that you have to. Okay. With that, it sounds like we can go on to question two, please. Question two, as a reminder, is support the housing element program commitments and AFFH commitments. Questions, comments from colleagues first? Any commissioners? Yes. Tom?
It's a study session, so if we go by first name, hopefully nobody's offended.
So, kind of, you know, if we take three positions towards this, let's say I was, you know, in agreement with everything here, then there's no issue, right? You can just proceed. If I don't like what's in here because I think that something's additional, will that be an issue in the future? Can we still add on additional policies that aren't in the housing element?
So the city can adopt programs, ordinances related to housing, even if the housing element, it's not in the housing, but the housing element is simply what the state is going to hold us accountable for. At the same time, if it is something that there is interest in doing, it's probably a good idea to bring it up, because if it's not something put in the housing element, there will be some people who say, we already have a list that we have to do for the state. I don't know that we want to do more. It's not that staff would say that, but other commissioners, council members could. So if there are certain things, it's great to bring them up, I think.
Okay. Sorry, that's exactly the answer I was expecting, I just wanted to hear it from you. The third, you know, position might be if, so if we don't like the policies that are in this housing element, maybe we, you know, after further discussion or after we dig in, right, the devil's in the details when you go to the implementation, we don't think we're able to do those policies, and then what happens?
So many of the programs, well, all of the programs are carefully written that they do commit to something. They commit to, for example, adopting an ordinance on a topic. The program might not say what needs to be in that ordinance. That's going to be something that through the public process, the community, the Planning Commission, and council will decide what is in the San Bruno version of addressing that topic, but the program commitment to the state is we will do an ordinance. So those are the ones that the city has the widest amount of latitude. There are some programs that do get a little more specific and say, we will do this, we will do an ordinance that does this. We're only being that specific because we think we've either been told or we have seen that HCD is going to want that amount of feedback. So I think it depends on the particular program you're concerned with, read that language, and if it, if the specific nature of it is a concern, you should raise it. If it's open enough, then we as a city will have the ability at a later date to decide exactly what's in it.
Okay, and then I'll, you know, just directly, so what if there's something specific or even general that we decide we either cannot or do not want to implement, and then what happens?
Well, preferably, we would hear that before we resubmit.
But what happens if the housing element's approved and there's a...
If we did, and again, because the sixth cycle is new and some of the higher expectations, there's not a track record to look at, we will have to do annual reports to HCD. We do that now, they will just be much more detailed and elaborate, and those reports will say how we have met our commitments, and we will have to either come up with a good enough reason why we did not do it, and possibly something we did in exchange for it, or the state could come back and say, you're out of compliance. How strict the state's going to be, we don't know, because this, their enforcement arm is slightly new, but I can tell you that a number of housing developers who have not liked what they have heard from the city on certain issues have called HCD, who then call us and ask what's going on, so they are active. So again, if there's something that is seen that is a concern, I think the preference is raise that now. Possibly the wording can be changed now before we submit to HCD.
Okay.
Through the chair. A question is on, to piggyback on my commissioners' comments. A question is on, to piggyback on my commissioners' comments. If we are not in compliance, for whatever reasons, from your perspective, what would be the, what would be the consequence to that?
Well, the consequence that is most talked about is the builder's remedy, and that is with recent state laws, one of the only ways you can deny a housing project is if you can say it does not comply with the general plan or the housing element or the zoning. And if you do not have a compliant housing element, the state has said you cannot use that finding to deny a project. And that's why you hear these stories of 60-story towers being proposed in other cities that may make no sense, but that could be proposed here, not suggesting they will or not, but it's a possibility. Also, leave us open to lawsuits from housing advocates, housing developers. It may affect funding issues. There's, there's a number of reasons why it'd be better to have a compliant housing element.
Of course.
Do you want to add anything?
Mayor Medina and commissioners, you know, I don't have much to add to what Peter said. He's exactly right. There's the builder's remedy, and then there's also enforcement action by HCD or the AG. I mean, there's a lot of heavy hammers for being out of compliance with your housing element.
Anything else from commissioners at this time? Anything else from colleagues? I'm hearing that if, oh, I'm sorry, councilman, oh, I'm sorry, your light was on. So one and two, I'm hearing concurrents or consensus to support that. So let's move to item three. Support staff adjusting the programs if necessary based on negotiations with HCD. Questions or comments from colleagues? Vice Mayor.
So just a quick question about what that would look like. So that would mean that HCD would potentially come and say, well, okay, we like this program, but we would, you know, it would look better on your final submittal if you tweaked it in this way. Are we, is answering yes here giving you, giving staff free rein to just go tweak that and resubmit? Or that would, I guess all that would still come back to us in the, in the final review?
Yes, I mean...
Before the formal submittal?
Yes. In the end, the housing element that council adopted in January is our housing element until you adopt something else.
Right.
So this is just us working with HCD, trying to get to something that they say can be certified. We bring that back. If HCD, HCD's common approach is to say, you have not fully demonstrated you comply with some subsection of the government code, expansion of Program 14A is necessary. And then our question to them or question we'll ask a consultant is, what is a, what is a program that you have found is acceptable? We'll look at that. We'll see, do we see an issue? If it's just modest changing of words, it doesn't actually change what we have to do, then we would call that minor. If it's something that's going to add a significant cost, a new, a new...
Something more substantive.
Something more substantial, then we're going to shift to the, well, they just gave us a significant change. We're putting the brakes on. We're coming back to council to talk about that.
It's going to trigger that, okay. All right, thank you.
Anything else, colleagues, at this time? Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there any priority when it comes to the adjustment on the program based on the Chapter Seven that we, from the staff report in regards to us, to be incorporated to the review of the HCD for their comments?
So for the RENA, if a RENA site was identified as being taken out, we did kind of give that list of, well, we're going to do this first and then that and then this. For the programs, we don't know what their, what HCD would say. And so to, to make it as straightforward as possible, we would negotiate with them within what we think our means are as the city of San Bruno. If they're asking for something that we think is reasonable and that the manager's office, the council would not have a concern with, then we're going to lean on just, we're just going to change the language in order to satisfy HCD. If it rises above that, that's, that's when it's the attempt to find other solutions, talk them through, hey, what if we did this other thing that this other community did and such? Worst-case scenario, if we end up with a spot where they're asking us to do something, we're not, we don't feel comfortable, you know, committing to council on, we would come back to council.
Thank you.
No other, Councilmember Salazar?
I think in general, I support everything that's being presented, and I understand how important it is to get this through. But it seems a little unusual that we're being asked to allow something, we don't really understand what the whole gamut of solutions could be. I mean, generally, when we author, like, if it's something that comes up on the legal side, we say, okay, we authorize you to settle up to this amount. In this case, it's, it's very open-ended, and I got to say, I am a little concerned that some of the things that are discussed in here, they sound good on paper, but then the implementation, I think we heard it from Commissioner Kean, you know, that the devil's in the details. And when it actually comes to implement some of these things, which sound great in concept, may have a lot of fallout in how we implement them. So I guess I just kind of offer that out as a cautionary sort of message when you go forward with this, you know, just please be careful because we really have no idea what the state could propose. And every city is different in so many ways, but the state is really treating us all the same, and we don't have the same resources and we don't have the same limitations. So just, please be careful.
Yes, and that's understood, and typically, we would like to bring you a package that has every word exactly as it is, say, here's the document. It's simply about, about the timeframes and trying, trying to get to yes with the outside agency. But everything will come back to council for final action. And we're less concerned, because there's now a much longer list of certified housing elements, we are less concerned about HCD asking us to do something out of the ordinary. Because, you know, one of our first questions will be, show us the cities that you required that of. And then they'll show us a list of them, and we'll look through those. And again, it has to fit us, but we're a little less concerned than we were even six months ago or a year ago. But we do understand this is not how we would typically approach these type of policies.
Thank you for those comments, councilmember. Okay, with that, I would like to move on to item, item, question four. Support the recommended schedule for housing element certification. Any... I'm sorry. Did I mention, wait on question three? Sorry. And thank you, because I'm only checking. Commissioner.
Yeah, so once again, maybe this is compliance again. What happens or what is that, you know, legally required schedule? You've laid out what you intend to do, but what's required of us?
So the, I would say the legally required schedule is we already should have a certified housing element now.
Oh, okay.
So, so optimally, we bring you a package that shows we can get a certified housing element next week. We can't. Again, outside agency and such and the complications. So getting the housing element certified as soon as reasonably possible closes the window of legal risk.
So we're currently in some legal jeopardy for not having it approved?
Not yet. We have...
Mayor Medina, commissioners, there's, you know, the city council and the planning commission took action before the January deadline, which is what it could do, and now it's working as fast as it can to get a certified housing element, which is, I think, why staff is presenting a way, a schedule to get there. And you want to close that window where we don't have a certified housing element as soon as possible.
And a lot of communities are, I mean, not Redwood City, of course, but others are much in our situation as when, at the conference last month was a conversation of topics by some of the electeds. Was there anything else from commissioners on this one? Vice Chair.
If I could go back, just before we go too far away, question two says affirmatively, furthering fair housing is a new requirement of the housing element. So it's a bit of a detail-oriented question for you. I'm going to be honest, when I read the packet, I had a similar takeaway than the gentleman who spoke in public comment about the clustering of potential development in downtown and east of San Bruno. How do we propose, it says here, tracks east of El Camino Real are considered low resource. Encourage the city to proactively find ways to add affordable housing into higher resource areas. Question for you is number one, what is the process or the intentionality behind actually doing that? And secondly, there was a really innovative approach with not a lot of details of partnering with the school system and educational institutions to potentially proactively uplift the schools and share some of the resources from the development. What does that look like? And is there a model of other cities engaged in such development, partnering with schools to increase their educational outcomes?
Yes, so there's many, the AFFH equity approach is, is very new. There is, there's a laundry list of things that we will need to do. We do need to demonstrate to HCD that we are not concentrating all of our RENA in the low resource areas. Having less than half of them there, I think HCD would say, we're not concentrating them. The overall thought of the resource areas is the city should take actions to improve the low resource areas so they are no longer low resource areas and not overly concentrate lower-income households in lower resource areas and try to find ways to get them into higher resource areas. So there are programs that are focused on that. 4D, the financial incentives to entice homeowners to build and rent out income-restricted ADUs in high resource areas. That is one such action. There is the program about working with schools to identify if there's anything within the city's purview that we may be able to incorporate into public, capital improvements, I should say, or new development. Like, for example, if there's a strong desire from the school district that more of the apartment complexes have computer rooms for kids who live in the complex or tutoring rooms or such, those are the types of things we can do. But it's, it's going to be a wide range of things. I think the biggest aspect for the AFFH is going to be Program 16A, if I have it right, and that is to prioritize our capital improvements in the low resource areas. The state doesn't have a metric. We would have to develop one on our own for how we determine whether we are prioritizing in our low, our lower resource areas. Spoken with Matt Lee, the Public Works Director, he has, he has seen these in other communities, and so he's looking into that. So we have, that is one of our programs, and it has an implementation date in it. So if you look through the AFFH matrix, that is the sum total of the things that the city's committing to, to try to address the inequities of the resource areas. And that matrix is, if I can remember which attachment, I believe it's attachment seven to the staff report. Yes.
I was just waiting for, sorry, thanks. Okay, any other commissioners? Okay, thank you. Now we'll go to, now we will go to four, which is support the recommended schedule for housing element certification. Vice, Vice Mayor.
So I think given the importance of getting this done, you know, we have to get this done as soon as possible. And looking at the schedule, this is, it's a pretty compressed schedule considering that we're in October. I guess my only concern would be to have enough time for the, to have all the meetings and stuff. I'm thinking that we're probably going to have a lot of special meetings in January to, you know, because obviously it depends on the, it depends on the informal feedback that we get in December. But, you know, I'm supportive of the schedule because I certainly wouldn't want it to go out any farther than this, and I don't see very much opportunity to compress it any further than it already is. But I think we're all going to need to prepare ourselves for having a lot more meetings than usual at the beginning of the, of the new year. Hopefully not. I mean, if we, if we do a good job with, and the informal feedback comes back from HCD, then it's not a whole lot for us to discuss. That could happen, but it also could not happen, so.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Correct me if I'm wrong, is our deadline for the certification would be one year from the statutory deadline, which was January 31st, 2023? So this would have to be concluded before January?
I believe that date is the date when the rezonings would have to happen, or else the housing element would be out of compliance. But as we do not have a certified housing element, we can't get more out of compliance for not having the rezoning done, which is why, again, instead of rushing the rezonings ahead and then having the readoption of the housing element follow after, we're just, we're just putting them together.
Thank you.
Planning commissioners on this topic? Seeing none? Okay. Going to move on to item five. Support the schedule for efficiency and productivity for municipal code amendments. It's question four.
Five.
Oh, I'm sorry, five. City council members, anything at this time? Planning commissioners, anything at this time? Let's move on to six. Generally, it's kind of a broad word, but generally, support the assignment of the implementation actions between staff, the planning commission, and the city council. And that's question number six. Colleagues? Vice Mayor.
Well, taking a page out of, of Councilmember Salazar's book, you know, it's, it's tough to, you know, to support something that's, that's general. This obviously is going to be something that we'll get more detail on later. So, I mean, I would be supportive of this in, you know, in general terms, knowing that the specifics of it are going to come back to us. So that's my, that's my comment.
Others? Planning commissioners?
Through the chair. I have a question.
Please, Commissioner.
Recognizing the challenges with staffing within the department, how do you propose that this can actually happen?
Our success with the funding step is going to be key. And so, but it's two-part. If we can open up some capacity with the productivity ordinance amendments, but then also if we can leverage housing funds and look at the master fee schedule for housing element implementation, if we can find sources that are not general fund-based to do housing element implementation, I, we're, I'm optimistic we can get all the work done. And just, just for context, on an annual base, or last year, our 0.4% general plan maintenance fee for building permits, it brought in half a million. And so if, if, we don't just want to add fees, but, but that's kind of, that's a 0.4%. Something like that could be out there to pay for part of it. Some of it could come out of impact fees that projects pay. Some of it could come out of impact fees that projects pay. Those are things that, depending on the answer to the next question, we would be accelerating and working on to try to inform next year's budget.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioners at this time? Okay, we'll move to seven. Support efforts to explore using housing funds and grants to fund housing element implementation to reduce impact to the general fund. Any questions or comments from colleagues at this time? Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Regarding the different grants, have we looked into the community development, different, different program grants? Like, I don't know which one is appropriate for our housing element that, or for what you mentioned earlier, when it comes to the, instead of compromising the development impact fee, we can have some block grant program stuff and other, for other grants that I came across with from HCD website? Which one of those are we applying for, to help us?
So, at this point, we are not at, we're waiting to get the, kind of, the green light to go down this path before we dig into all the options. CDBD grants in general, you're only able to use a small portion towards staffing, so I'm not really envisioning that's going to be, that might be something that could be used for some of the other programs, but we're going to be looking comprehensively at all options in conversations with our CFO and the manager's office. We may come up with other things. The idea is, we want a green light to go out and brainstorm and find as many options out there so that the general fund impact of implementation is as close to zero as possible.
So, I'm sorry. Okay. So, I mean, I would have no problem giving that green light. I mean, if there are grants and state programs and other things that we can apply for to help us with this, obviously, obviously, the answer would be yes there. Another reason I would want to support that is, I wouldn't want us, I know that we, that we are allowed to use some of our housing fund monies to do part of this work. I would want to limit that as much as possible so that we save as much of that money as possible to actually build affordable housing. So, that would be the only extra thing I would add to this. But I am absolutely in favor of us going out and finding, finding help to fund these things.
I think everybody's on that one.
Yeah.
Right? Anything of councilmember Salazar, then we'll see if the commissioners.
So, I agree with the vice mayor on the protecting our affordable housing dollars as much as possible. And one question, just in, how long of an implementation cycle are we looking at? How long is it going to take to implement?
So, the, when you go into the more detailed attachments, each, each program has subactions. Each subaction has a timeframe that we are committing to meet. And we try to lay them out in, into phases so that basically the four to five years of the eight-year cycle, we're doing most of the implementation.
Okay. So, okay. So, I was just thinking in terms of how much sense it would make to adjust fees if it's, if we need to ramp up quickly to get some of this done, you know, adjusting the fee schedule to pay for even just a portion of it, it might take a lot longer if that's the route we want to go. So, I don't know if, I mean, I'm definitely in favor of doing anything to protect the general fund, but I'm just wondering how quickly we can ramp up and how those fees might become unaffordable if we try to burden them too much with, with this effort. So, more of a comment, I guess, than a question, but thank you.
Commissioner.
Yeah, so just real quick, can you, can you tell me what are the potential sources of the funds? You said that the housing funds, the grants, general fund. Anything else?
The, in the housing funds, there's, we need to research each of our housing impact fees to see exactly how they're, how they're defined and arranged. It may be, maybe necessary to recommend changes to how those fees are categorized. There's the adjustments to the fee schedule for overhead or percentage fees. And then there are the grants. Those are, those are kind of the top three on our list.
Okay, so, and then development impact fees and then, like, permit fees, building fees? Or planning fees? Okay.
And one of the things that we're, that at least I'm factoring in is, as we continue to improve with the online, online plan review and such, the staff time on some of those, staff time on many of those things are actually going to come down. So, again, over time, building permit fees will drop a bit. And so, that's part of the, of the conversation in the brainstorming of, if it's going to drop a little bit, might we increase it a little bit back to do housing element implementation? Again, we haven't started to crunch the numbers yet.
Okay. So, you know, my input on this would be, you know, set aside general fund, I don't understand where that comes from. Development fees, generally, we would think if you increase the fees, then you're going to see less development, right? They go hand in hand. So, that's negatively impacts what, you know, what the housing element's trying to do. We should avoid that. Ditto with housing funds, just like, I think we're all in agreement, we don't want to use that. I, I think the HCD has given you guys an unrealistic goal to do this, you know, to adopt something within a very short period of time. It's an immense task, so much paperwork. This is crazy. There has to be more pushback on them. Since they're not giving you any money to do this, right? They're not giving you money for staff. And then the same thing carrying this out, they wanted to adopt 50 different programs or however many we have, over a four-year period of time? Is that right, Peter? Five years?
The, the program table puts most of the implementation of programs over, over five years.
Yeah. Again, very unrealistic, and I think you're just going to have to slow it down. Is that an option? Just slow it down, make it eight years.
We are, we're proposing timeframes that we think will get us certification.
Okay. I think, you know, negotiation, pushback, if they're not willing that, maybe just reduce the programs. I don't know how you're going to pay for it.
Okay. Any other commissioners? Yeah. Okay. First, I want to check in with the city manager to see if there's been that, I'm going to have a final comment. I'm hearing what you're saying, but I understand we're not the only community in this situation. And I think if this county, if this state, as we all gathered in September, had the magic sword that could help change Sacramento and what's been dealt to us, but I think you well know that there are many things that are placed upon communities, municipalities that they do not fund, but they make us, make us do. City manager.
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And if I can, given that we have 11 minutes left and we seem to be wrapping up, I feel like I'm going to inject now. The last question I think that was raised, and I think, I think Peter and I are seeking greater clarity from the council. What the council is saying to us, what I'm hearing, is protect the general fund, protect the housing funds, which leaves grants which are very unreliable. So, you've put us in a corner and we have no good solutions. Well, I think what Peter and I will push, or encourage, or at least ask of the council, is the housing funds, I know the idea there is to build housing. I get it. Not lost on me, to construct housing, to create units. But this whole process, the whole housing element effort, is changing our processes so that we can do that as well. So, I think the question I want to ask, and I'd like to ask you to just recon, not reconsider your answers, clarify your answers for me, is can we look to housing funds, if it's legal to do so, where it's legal to do so, as a means of paying for some of these housing initiatives that we're talking about? Again, where it's legal to do so, I want to be very clear about that, because what you're going to end up doing is pushing us back to the general fund by default. There's not, there's no fourth amount of money out there that somehow is going to be created that is going to make this easy. And I think that the commissioner pointed it out very well. We don't, excuse me, we don't love this, but we have to do it. And the, the consequences of failure to do so are not really something we want to face. So, I just want to make sure I'm hearing clarity from the council. And you can stick to your positions, I want to be clear, I get it, but just understand by default, you're going to be pushing us back to the general fund. That's my only comment.
No, I appreciate that and thank you for asking for that clarification. And well, first, vice mayor.
So, I just want to, maybe I need to clarify what I was saying earlier. I was, I guess I didn't hear the how unreliable the grants are, but, I mean, obviously, I should know that anyway. But the, what I was trying to get across was that we exhaust all of our, you know, we exhaust all of our options grant-wise before we go to these other things. That, I mean, it sounds like you're in agreement with there, too, but I just wanted to be, I want to make sure that my position is clarified in that way.
Councilmember.
Thank you. So, I understand that staff does want to have options that they present this and it's going to make it more sellable. So, I guess I would say I'm not opposed to using any of them, but in terms of prioritizing, I would want to see grants considered first and, like the vice mayor said, exhaust those possibilities. And then looking at the other options, looking at, you know, one-time funds and the general fund. So, anything that's coming in, it's one-time, it's not programmed, that we could consider those dollars, then look at housing and then the general fund and, because, I mean, we're already overtaxed on the general fund, and so I wouldn't want to hurt it anymore. But if there are one-time dollars available that we could program that haven't already been programmed, then we should target those first before the two remaining sources.
One councilmember.
It's almost obvious that that's our preference, but you have to hear it from us to say it. So, understandably, we do have these one-time funds. And it also depends on what, the amount that you're going to come back and ask us for. We saw the numbers of 800,000 to ongoing, and then the one, was it 1.7 of the one-time funds necessary. So, that might match up, but having, being able to provide clearer directions when it's clear what we're actually doing, you know, that's going to be very helpful. And I just wanted to also note that it's very typical for the state to provide mandates that are unfunded. It happens too often, but here we are, having to deal with it. So, you know, we're going to, we're going to find a way to do it, and just wanted to share that as well. So, thank you.
And I would concur, like, down, down, councilmember Salazar's. Okay, anything else? Okay. With that, I do, and again, I do appreciate, because I know for the planning commission, it's like, okay, we have two free Tuesdays a month, and now we have one. So, but I do hope, you understand, I did talk to the chair briefly, but I feel it's important. I feel this being together, us all hearing the information real time. With the same, I want to make a point that Aros also submitted comments that have been submitted for us since he was not able to be here this evening. But I do want to thank you for taking the time and the effort, and I, and I find this decision was a good one. And, you know, it's one of those things that, do I regret it? No. I'm sorry I can't give you back the time, but I think it's an important topic for our community. It's going to have long-lasting effects. And I think as long as we're all in the room and we're all in it together, that that's the best way to go forward. With that, we're going to adjourn this special meeting to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held on October 10th, 2023, at 7:00. This meeting, the special meeting of the joint boards is now adjourned.